I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Wednesday, March eleventh at seven oh one P. M. A couple announcements, one is Mr. Bombara and Mr. Holland have excused absences tonight. And I was not at last month's meeting, but I filed with the town, I watched the meetings on, on video, and I filed with the town clerk the Mullen Rule status. And the first order of business is a continued public hearing for Dermot and Diana Collins.
So we've got the last one. So I've got these plans chairs, if you want to have a look at them. It's kind of like a garage for storage. And we've taken out all the rooms upstairs, so we've just put a bathroom in there. That's basically it, or water tank. Um, that'll have electric heater. There were some questions there, they're up to some of the walls that we had, so we took everything out.
Um, I've one, when I watched on video, um, I have some various questions on whether or not it's a buildable lot. Beyond the garage and the whole thing, it, um, it's an undersized lot, never had a building on it, so it's not grandfathered, a pre-existing, non-conforming structure never existed on it. So, I, I'm not sure it's a buildable lot, but it's just...
Well, it used to own, uh, thirteen was next door, and that's a fifty by seventy five lot.
That's...
Yeah, yeah, but it's a size, yeah, yeah.
It's, um, how the laws are written.
Yeah, yeah.
And the fact that it never had a house on it.
Okay.
And it's a separate lot.
Yeah.
Because it's separated by the street, it's owned by another person.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's, it's like an unusable lot, it's not, not grandfathered.
What's the, what are the problems or how there's, as the assessors park it?
No, I haven't seen, I drove by there actually today.
Yeah.
But there are certain criteria you have to meet. You have to have hardship, and hardship has to be soil conditions, topography, or an odd-shaped lot.
Yes.
You don't have any of those. But, in any event, I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced it's a buildable lot. We had, uh, a case here a few years ago. It was a same-sized lot, there had never been a, uh,
House?
A house on it, a pre-existing home on it, and honestly, it went to court.
Didn't have been any, any, uh, any building, yeah.
It went to court and town prevailed.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to, I think it'd be an improvement for the place, I mean...
Yeah, well, you know, I, I will say that one of the other issues that I have is, is the density down there.
Yeah.
It's very, very, very congested.
Yeah.
To the point where it's, could be getting dangerous. But, you know, i- if it's, it's a moot point, that is a moot point, if the, if the lot is not built upon.
Yeah.
Have you got thoughts? Did anything to say?
I'm unsure if it's buildable or not, we've had to check into it. Um, asking different questions about it, and then there's some question about whether it was connected to this other lot across the street.
Mm-hmm.
But that's off our assessors map, and it shows the street as a separate possum.
Yeah.
There's a possum number on it.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think that the lots are connected. Yeah, I couldn't find my other paper, no doubt, I'm probably...
He does have his father-in-law, who is a elderly gentleman, he's gonna have him, you know, stay there.
Well, I know, Louis, that doesn't change the buildability of the lot, you know, you understand that.
If you want to give it to him, you vote for it, if you don't want to give it to him, you don't vote for it. So if this board tonight says, "That's okay," it's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's up to us, that's all. I'm personally for it.
Yeah, Brian? If I may, Mr. Chairman, Brian Winter, counsel. Some of the board members may remember our conversation at the last session of this public hearing. Uh, and this issue came up, is whether or not it was a merged lot, whether or not it was a grandfathered lot. And I just wanted to remind the board that your building commissioner issued a decision on December fifth, uh, finding two important things, one, that it's not grandfathered, and two, that it was merged, and that the only way it could be built upon was pursuant to a variance. So that wasn't appealed, so that's the law of your case now, so it's not a grandfathered lot. The only way it could be built upon is a variance, so I think you mentioned it, Mr. Chairman, earlier, which is, you'd have to meet the variance standard, which is a much higher standard. You alluded to some of the, the thresholds for that, uh, shape, topography, soil conditions, and the hardship. So I think that would be what you may want to focus your, your consideration on.
Okay.
And if you find, obviously, that it doesn't meet those standards, and that there isn't a hardship, then you know what flows from that.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, now, if he meets the hardship and everything, then it's buildable, right?
If you see fit to grant a variance based on one of those factors.
So it's basically, it's up to us, right here, this is it.
You have to meet the hardship, we don't make the hardship requirements.
Well, he has his father-in-law, he's taken care of.
Yeah, it's not a hardship. Not according to, for variance.
Is that a hardship, sir?
It's not shape, it's not topography, it's not soil conditions.
It's just self-made.
Was provided a copy of the application, and it's, it's not argued what the basis of the hardship is, so you can ask the applicant to articulate the case, and you can decide the merits of that.
Well, it's a, you know, i- i- my father-in-law's a Korean War vet, so like, for him to have somewhere to park a car, it's, that's safe and dry, and he's not gonna be able to show the stuff, so that's a hardship for me.
I understand, but in zoning, you have to have specific hardships. It has to be related to the soil conditions, the shape of your lot, the topography of your lot. And unfortunately, personal needs or personal other issues just don't, don't qualify as a hardship in the zoning.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready, if we could hear from our building commissioner regarding his decision.
Absolutely.
And his recommendation, I, I'd like to understand how, how, if it's not, not contiguous, and that it's separate, and that... I'd just like to have you explain, like, if you would mind.
So, there was, the two lots have been held in common since nineteen sixty-four, from what I gathered in my...
Okay, so who, so who, just...
So there's still, there's still a possibility, depending on where the property line is to the center of the road, so he could prove that they're two separate lots, and that it's grandfathered in, so that, because you can't...
Wait a minute. Is anybody following? Okay, let's back up and start over.
He has to prove that that woman owns that road, and it's separate, the lots don't come to the center of that road.
He has to prove that?
Yeah.
That the, that the lots are together?
Yeah, because from what I see, that they were, they were held in common, they were, so now they're joined.
Okay, so, if I'm not mistaken, we had a lady here last week, were you here, or last month?
Yeah.
That brought a, a deed.
Yeah.
Uh, I think, and that she owns that property, in fact, it's listed on the, uh, assessors map, that someone else owns the property.
Yeah.
So how...
Then they'd be two separate lots.
Okay, so how did you make your determina-, why, how did you make your determination that it was the same?
Because I determined that they were joined, because I didn't see that deed. I saw the deed set for his two properties.
Oh, okay, I see, so you're looking at his documentation?
Yes.
And do, do you look at the assessors' maps at all, or...
That's where I go, the registry of deeds, on my ma-, on my mapping, I don't need to go to the assessor.
Does it show that the road is held by someone else, or is owned by someone else? Like the map that I'm looking at?
Yeah, well, apparently, yeah.
It shows, it shows as a plot, but it doesn't show the owner.
Brian, can you help us out here? The fact of whether the line's in the center of the road or not the center of the road.
When I watched the meeting, there was a lady here, I don't know if she's here tonight or not, but she said it was her property.
They, that her, her family once, once owned that entire area, and they divided it up, but she kept the road.
She had her family that owned it.
Did she leave any documentation with you, Maria? Or do we have her name?
I took a copy of the survey plan that she had, and I misplaced it, I don't know where.
Well, that's a vulnerable offense.
I know, I sent her an email, but she hadn't answered me, so...
Okay, thank you.
What Mark had said at the beginning when he just started talking was, in his opinion, that the roads are, and the two lots are contiguous because they meet in the center of the road, being halfway to the center, because it's a private way.
Just because it's a private, sorry.
It would be the burden of the applicant to prove that they're not connected, in his opinion, they are, if that was the case.
Yeah.
So...
Well, why would the applicant want to do that?
But if they are connected, then we're looking at having two pre-, two non-conforming structures on the same lot.
If they're connected, that's your, so...
Sorry?
If they're connected, they're one, they become one lot because they're held in common.
Right, but then they'd have two non-conforming structures on the same lot, if this was approved.
It'd be an accessory structure at that point, so it'd be fine, wouldn't it?
Is it an accessory structure if there's living space above it?
Well, if it's a garage, and it's one wide open room, and it doesn't say bedroom on the plan.
There's no living space above it now, because we changed it, I took everything out, it's just an open room.
Is there anybody in the room that'd like to speak on this? Oh, what is the voice?
So would that make it okay, then it was accessory?
Yes.
Yeah?
What's the town council think of that?
I'm not sure we've got clarified, I, I'm still in a corner.
Mr. Chairman, would it be helpful if I tried to offer a couple of words on that?
Do you want to come up?
So, uh, that's easier for everyone, so I'm not speaking over your shoulder, to be happy to.
That's gonna shoot you across the...
That's a trick chair for April first.
So, if we go with the building inspector, building commissioner's determination, which we kind of have to, because that decision wasn't appealed, and there's no evidence to contradict it here tonight, then you could have an accessory structure, which is a garage, no living space, so there's no, um, in-law apartment, no accessory apartment proposed, it's just a garage with some storage space. And that would be accessory to the principal rooms, which is the existing residential dwelling. So the only way that works is if a variance was granted, because that's what the building commissioner determined was necessary, and it wasn't challenged. Now, had there have been an appeal, and the applicant, the property owner, wanted to say, "Actually, they're two separate lots. You can't merge them, you can't treat them this way." You might have a different case in front of you, so there's still this open question, it wasn't appealed, so the building inspector's decision stands as just an operation of law, but also, we don't really have an answer to that question, because nothing's been put in front of this board one way or the other to show that there's some, um, you know, intersecting ownership that would require, give you the opportunity to make a finding that these are two separate lots. Now, if that's the applicant's position or was at the time, that would have been an argument to make. This is an independent grandfathered lot, we don't even need to look at my existing house, this is a separate lot, you cannot merge them. That case never came before you, it hasn't come before you.
Mm-hmm.
So, I understand sort of the, the equity of the situation, you want to get to the bottom of it, but you can only act on what you have in front of you.
Who can't hear withdrawal?
It's up to the applicant, and then at this point, the board can decide whether or not to accept it, since the hearing's been opened and you've had two nights. That's not the board's decision, that's the applicant's.
The other thing that came to my attention, um, he did submit a plot plan, so to speak. It has some dimensions, and it states right here, it's not stamped or anything. Someone, whoever drew this, wrote a note on it saying, "No, no property line survey has been done for this plan." So these measurements of eight point seven feet and eight point six feet are just
Yes, yes.
assumptions, I guess. So, I mean, I think...
I actually got, I got this from the, the, um, credit on the subject as well.
Uh-huh.
So he did...
But what they're saying here is that they're, they're, basically, it's, it's an assumption on their part that...
Well, he just took it off the, off the, um, the measurements to be going when the, when the, um, design decision.
But you, can you see the...
Yeah, I, I understand that.
No propping line survey, so if you say you're eight foot six from the property line, how do you know that? The property line hasn't been surveyed.
Yeah, you could be much more, that's what he's saying.
Yeah.
Oh, it could be much less.
Yeah, I think it's much more, to be honest.
Well, one or the other.
Generally, that's one of the requirements of this board.
Is that we require it be, if it's approved, to be built according to the plan submitted. The plan submitted says...
Well, because, like, it, the lot's fifty feet wide, so the garage is twenty-eight by twenty-four, reduce the size of the camp as well.
The lot is fifty feet wide at its widest point, it gets narrow as it goes back, so it's not fifty feet.
It's where the garage is. Seventy feet at the top.
Mm-hmm.
Actually gets wider.
Well, I think that's because it's at an angle, to be honest with you, if it came straight across, it would be narrow, but...
So, do we need to make an engineered, engineered stamp on a plan?
Well, I, I mean, if that's what he's applying for, whoever did this is very clearly stating that it was drawn without a, a property line survey.
Like, when I reckon myself, if, if I had have got the property line survey, that would have been, I would have given the guy six hundred bucks, you know, it's sort of the difference.
Well, you're, you're willing to make a place of space to invest with the garage.
Yeah.
I mean, six hundred dollars and the whole picture is in a whole lot.
It's, I'm trying to improve the place, you know, so it's, it's basically an accessory.
So why don't you just continue this until you get a stamp?
Continue or withdraw it?
Yeah, withdraw it.
I mean, the application is incomplete.
Yeah, yeah.
Very incomplete, and they asked for the distances, we, we're here. I mean, I highlighted the missing information.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think you probably need some guidance from some professional.
Okay.
Personally, I'm comfortable voting in favor of it, as it's presented. So, you could have us move forward.
So what we need is the, the application completed, we need a stamp, a stamp to engineer a plan of your lot, a lot, and we need, um, actually, we need you to be able to present, uh, your reasons for a variance, very clearly.
Probably as, as important as anything.
Yeah.
I, I don't see any hardship.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that you personally don't have a hardship, if you have relative, but that
Doesn't qualify.
That doesn't qualify in Commonwealth as a reason to get a, a variance.
So if we had, so if he had a survey, and said, you know, that he has more land in than we think, we could have a walk in the park, right?
Well, I don't know about that, but we could
Well, be, be better than that.
Go forward.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a panel alluded to, and I could, it's probably the most congested three acres or whatever it is down there in the whole town. There's more homes on that cottage colony strip than there are anywhere else in town.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna contribute to a...
Let no traffic, because everybody owns it, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Well, they're going slow enough, so...
They stopped.
So, I, um, I mean, your options, you could withdraw.
I'd draw neighbor of his.
And...
Well, oh, the property, that yellow house, you don't own that house, yeah?
I don't own that.
Okay. I suddenly realized you probably shouldn't even be saying anything.
Yeah, I don't own it.
Okay.
I mean, you could seek a continuance, but it seems to just, we're at number three now, or withdraw entirely and come back more prepared, and, but I, I think the, the most important, one of the most important things, at least to me, is you've got to prove that you have a hardship.
For variance.
For a variance. And that's not our rules, that's what we have to go by.
Okay.
So you need some professional advice.
Yeah, I'll just withdraw, then, if you thought it was the best way to do it.
So you, so we'll have to vote on that.
So you're requesting to withdraw the application?
Yeah.
We have a motion, a motion, or a request, Mr. Holmes, to withdraw his application for case number...
Thirteen, two zero one nine one three.
I can wait.
And, Mr. Chairman, forgive me, but is that without prejudice?
Yeah, we're gonna withdraw without prejudice?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Well, a move that we accept the continuation are the withdrawal of case number two zero one nine dash one three, uh, without prejudice.
Do we have a side?
Sorry.
Here we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Could you write a letter, so that you can bring it in to me, and I will stamp it out?
Okay, well, thanks.
Okay, next agenda item is, uh, petitioning a public hearing for Kenneth Gowan, requesting a variance.
Oh, she's back.
I'm back.
Welcome.
I missed you guys so much, I decided to come back again. I am...
Thanks, I'm so wonderful, I'm gonna want to see you next month, too.
No.
Oh, yes.
No. I'll come just to say hi.
Okay.
Um, Kristen Legree from Andrew Survey and Engineering, representing the applicant, Kenneth Gowan. Um, as we spoke last meeting, um, we determined that it was indeed a variance that was needed, uh, because of, it wasn't the same footprint, it wasn't the same building, there was no reconstruction. The request was for a varian-, a side setback variance, um, due to the size of the lot. Uh, the lot is about seventy-five feet wide, so it would, it results in about a twenty-five-foot building envelope, um, which is very narrow for, for a home. Um, so the side varian-, the side setback variance would allow them to build, um, an adequate size, a, a normal-sized home. For the lot, uh, we are still going through conservation as well, because they're, they said they had to wait for ZBAs sign off, for them to sign off, and a whole bunch of...
So, are we making it with border health?
The border health, we are waiting to submit until after all of this, because if all of this doesn't go well, then there's no point of submitting checks issue to the town.
You go for tight tag.
No, uh, pipe and stone, traditional.
Oh.
Step system.
When I, um, did watch the meeting, um, town council, we, we, um, had a discussion about having multiple non-conforming structures on the same lot.
Why don't I revisit that issue, if that's all right?
Yeah, please, too.
Just to sort of recap, um, what was a complicated discussion, I think?
Yes, yeah.
Because this is an unusual situation. Uh, normally, when you have a situation where sometimes you're quote-unquote rebuilding, it's on the same location, you're taking one down, you're putting something right back up. In this case, um, what they're asking for is something a little unorthodox. They're gonna sort of decommission the existing structure, and then reconstruct the dwelling on another location. So it works conceptually, because your net doesn't change.
Right.
You started with a residential, you know, dwelling, and you get in with a residential dwelling, nothing more, you have an accessory building at the end. Um, so the, the, once we get past that, then you have to look at whether or not you're creating new non-conformities, and you get into this different analysis, which is, are you exacerbating any existing non-conformities, creating new ones? So we went through that whole analysis the last time, um, that we marked up, kind of by hand, which ones existed, which ones are gonna be new, which ones require the variance. And I think we had reached a consensus as to where the changes were, and what kind of relief was necessary, and that's the variance relief. So I think we are to the place where, at least from a zoning perspective, uh, we have a good handle on what needs to be done, and we never really got to the merits of that, we were just trying to uh, unpackage it in a way that made sense. And I think we've gotten that far, and I think now the board's in a position to really think about the merits of that variance.
So the, the existing homes that they're decommissioned, that's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and then the new home with a variance would become a new home with a...
So in essence, they're taking the, the grandfathering right and assigning it to the new structure. Which means, the old structure can't have it anymore. Can't get a new one, you can't double-debat, so that's why that one has to be decommissioned.
What about that structure remaining, viewed after it's decommissioned?
So it now becomes, well, no, it's not an issue in terms of whether or not it's an obstacle, it's just, it needs to be addressed. So now, uh, it becomes non-conforming, again, as an accessory building. Um, so the relief would have to address, you know, these setbacks, the distance to the road, or the, the way, I should say, uh, side lot line, and perhaps the rear lot line. So that, that would be included, because now you have this non-conforming, uh, accessory building in the back, which is no longer blessed by any grandfathering rights, so those need relief. So there are a lot of things circled on this plan that need relief, but that's not to say it can't be done. It's just the mechanism for getting to that finish line required a little, uh, little fall.
And was that all addressed in the application, all of those, uh?
The, the exist-, the new building was addressed in, was addressed in the variance.
Right.
The existing non-conforming home that will then be converted into an accessory structure was not, I guess, formally requested, but I, I, the last meeting, we said that it could easily be added into the, to the relief, into the, the language of the relief, without having to redo anything.
Right, it was, it was, we, we had a discussion, well, I don't remember everything I said, I didn't watch the video, but...
That's not a good defense, you know.
No, but, well, what we did talk about was whether or not it was in
I do.
Whether or not the relief applied for was inclusive, and whether or not the hearing that this board was conducting gave people, the public, adequate reasonable notice to know that those changes and that relief was being requested, that's what we examined. Um, and I think what I suggested is that you memorialize that in some way, uh, if it wasn't already memorialized in the application, so that the board had a complete, essentially a table of what relief was being requested, and in what respect.
No, we were told that we didn't have to make any other changes to the application, because, because when we, when we left, we said, "Do we need to make any other changes?" And I, the answer was no.
But you still need a letter.
Of something that you desire...
Memorializing that, right. So the board knows, you know, clearly what it's voting on, because they'll have to make a motion at some point based on that. So what I, what we had said was, you don't need to start over. You don't need to send out a new public notice, you don't need to file a new application, but we still need something on file, you know, on your letterhead with your name, saying, "Just to be clear, this is what I'm asking the board to vote on." And that rounds out the record, so that there's no doubt. Because I think thus far, what you have on the record is my opinion.
So with the letter
I don't know, this is...
Attached. I mean, can we add it?
In bullet, maybe in bullet form or something?
Can we, can we add it tomorrow, though? Can we, can it, can a vote still be made, and we add the letter?
Usually we, we...
Because I guess that wasn't made clear the last time we heard that, that a letter needed to be added to the application, because that was something we could have easily done.
You want to draft something? We'll move on to the next case, you draft something, we'll have it to you back?
Print it on our letterhead?
We're not really being that...
Engineers engineering, whatever.
I can handwrite, yeah, you can most certainly do that.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna go to the next case.
Yep.
It might be, might be a little time, but we're trying to get it done.
Mr. Healy, may I say something on their behalf? I actually live on Laurel Blades.
Okay.
I'm the last house on...
You just need to state your name.
I'm sorry, Diane Ackley.
Okay.
Okay, from thirty-three Laurel Blades, Douglas. Um, I live on Laurel Blades, on the last house. Then there's my son's lot, and then there's Kenny's lot, where they're building.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that they're asking for a variance, I believe, of like, six and a half feet from... And I know that they're asking for a variance, I believe, of like six and a half feet from my son's property line. We have no objections whatsoever.
Okay.
Okay? It's not going to be a detriment with the house and the work around it. Actually, it's going to be a plus.
Mm-hmm.
And my son currently lives in Virginia. I was down there for Christmas. I discussed it with him. And we have no problem with it whatsoever.
Okay.
And I certainly hope that the board takes that into consideration.
Good, we'll make that part of the record. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this case? Okay, so I guess.
I'll move that we, uh.
Continue until the next case is complete?
For a half hour.
We do that, we do that, right?
Yeah. Gave it for now. Give the second call.
Okay. The next agenda.
Excuse me, do a second picture.
No, we just tabled it.
We just tabled it.
Attorney Weiner, Winner, sorry.
Weiner. I'm glad you were here for this.
Okay, the next agenda item is a discussion about North Carolina law.
Are you guys again?
Again, we're on this here. Poker night, right? Right, yeah, let's just insert on this. And I have more of the large plans that we're gonna lay one out here.
He's passing off pages, saying, but I have more.
I have more.
You want more?
So, as the board may recall, last time we were here, the building commissioner and, and the town engineer were asking for input from the board in terms of issues regarding the location of, of buildings in Phase Two, which we've begun construction on. And what primary issue was this setback line that was, or offset line that was shown on the original plan that was approved in two thousand and ten, which is twenty-six feet on one side and twenty on the other. And the question was, what was it intended to, to show? Was it to show parking or was it intended as a building setback line? So we discussed that for a while, and I won't rehash that discussion. It was then suggested by Mr. Barlow, who was the builder, that perhaps the, the road, when it was paved, got shifted a little bit to, towards sixty-five and sixty-six, and that might have accounted for the fact that the, this building was a little closer. So we went out and measured it, and it was agreed that, that the most accurate way of measuring it, since it was, it's only just binder down at this point anyways, was to determine the center line and take the measurements off of the center line. So we went out and did that, and what we came up with was that unit sixty-five was about eleven inches over this line. And the same is true of units sixty-seven and sixty-eight. One was about eleven inches and the other one was about probably eight inches. So, so we had this plan done, and I submitted a letter to the town, I believe, the town. Does everyone have a copy of my letter?
I've got multiple letters. I haven't read the latest one, so.
Well, yeah, I haven't read Bill's either.
No, I think this is. Oh, yes, okay, so it goes.
So.
All right, yes, I read, I think the reason is right. I've had it for a while.
Sorry, anyway. So I submitted a letter requesting a minor modification of the comprehensive permit, which we believe to be an insubstantial change. And the Mark Allen, who is our engineer, Mr. Ipe.
Welcome. You guys are early.
They're breezing through here to prepare this plan to supplement the letter. And so that's for submitting this evening. And I also have a motion for consideration for the board on the insubstantial change.
Thanks, Ed. You're doing a good job. You tried.
Got one from Maria.
I just need comments for the.
So that's essentially it. If there are questions, I'm delighted to answer it. Mark Allen, the engineer, is here as well, and Alana Cork, an attorney from the Cape who deals with forty B projects, is here to answer any questions regarding insubstantial change. Well, I don't know. Do you, do you allow me?
I do. A Nashby.
Just over one.
Welcome to Douglas.
Beautiful town.
Welcome to the United States, right?
Alana informs me that she represented Douglas at one time.
Really? Use your name again?
Atlanta Cork.
Didn't hear.
Alana Cork.
Atlanta, Atlanta Cork.
Yeah, that does sound familiar. It's a matter of fact. You're what familiar?
Discussionable.
Um, I've, I've done some thinking about it because I, I'm a little, I am concerned about the, frankly, about the distance in front of your garages.
Okay.
In fact, so much so that today I, I only have one copy. But I think, you know, I've gone up there a few times, and what I see is that the driveways are full of, of vehicle, meaning one vehicle. And some of them are not quite up to the garage door, and the rear end is like almost into the, into the yard or into the, um, street or the sidewalk. And so I, I went online today and I said, okay, so what's the average length of vehicles? Turns out that they vary, they varies from ten and a half feet to eighteen and a half feet. One time I was up, I was up there and I saw a car actually parked, well, you, you can't park on, on the, um, right up to the garage door. Otherwise, you're gonna hit the garage door. You know, you, you need to have that distance to stay away.
Uh-huh.
Um, and, and it's, 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 it seems like it's really cramped.
Well, it's, that's, that's why the twenty feet was determined.
Yeah.
Uh, in, again, in Douglas, under Douglas zoning, parking spaces are eighteen feet long. That's what Douglas.
That was probably done in nineteen seventy-six. You know what I mean?
But, but the plan was approved with the twenty-foot and the twenty-six-foot setbacks, and so that.
I don't know if that was iterated, if those dimensions were iterated. I just, I, I, all I'm saying is, I see, I see an issue up there with, with getting, getting cars of today, in two thousand and twenty, into those driveways, and I just wanted to alert you just the fact that it looks like it's a problem. Because it could be a public safety issue if they're in the drug, in the street.
Well, I, I really haven't noticed any that are projected into the street. But, but, and people park on, on the side of the street as well, so, yeah. But I, you know, I haven't noticed that they've projected onto, onto the street. I really haven't.
I mean, when, when some, like a van backs up and people try to load the van, you have to have, you have to be so far away to have either the back hatch go up or, or van doors open and, and do some workspace, you know, to, to get into the house. In particular, I think it was the last one, or one of the houses that, in Phase Two, that has a porch on it. I saw a van in front of it today, and, and the front end of the van was in the street.
Well, those are under construction and those are workers' vans.
I understand that. I understand.
And under the, the condo docks, those types of vehicles aren't allowed.
Ah, that brings me to my next point. Are those condo docks public information?
They're on, they're recorded.
Okay, so, so would it be possible to get a copy that is, belongs to the town and is held by the town clerk?
I, I, you can get them online. You can print them.
Oh, okay.
And, and they were reviewed by Jay Tallman.
No, I, I believe you. I'm just wondering if there's something in the town that can be looked at and whether you'd object to having the town have a copy of it.
Well, it's public talking.
Okay, okay.
Mister Chairman, I, Lea Cork, just want to interject just briefly. I think that I can help by pointing out that what we have this evening before the board is a comprehensive permit project. This previously approved, both the comprehensive permit itself and the plan that went with it. And the reason why we're here this evening is because the town engineer had noticed, once Phase Two was underway, that there were some potential issues relating to two or three of the units. And he had questions as to whether those particular units were in conformance with the approved plan. And so those are the only issues that bring us here this evening with respect to a request for an insubstantial modification just as to those units.
Okay.
As opposed to the other units, which already have their occupancy permits already built and, and done.
Believe me, I, I understand that. I guess I would, I would think favorably on this if there were no, no more than a foot. You, you don't document or discuss how, how, how much, what is insubstantial and what is substantial, what the, what the, what the measurement is. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't want to okay anything with a blank, no number or something.
Well, again, that's why we did this plan, which has the numbers on it for the buildings and.
But your motion doesn't have any numbers written in it.
The, the motion references the plan.
Yeah.
And, and the letter.
I was just going to reiterate that the motion references the plan so that it's specific to what's shown.
I think you're both on the same page.
Funny how that works out. So, yeah, the, the, the distances are shown on the plan here, and this is, there are two buildings in question, Pam. It's this one here, sixty-five and sixty-six.
X minus five.
Okay? And it, of this first building, it is really only this, this corner is the issue.
You see that?
It's, it shows us thirty-seven point one to the center line of the road. So you really have to subtract twelve from that because the road is twenty-four feet, so, so it's twelve on either side. So that gets you down to twenty-five point one. So rather than the twenty-six, the corner's twenty-five point one. However, at this point, it is thirty-nine feet, which would mean twenty-seven feet. So it is over when you get to the middle. You get, you actually get to the twenty-six foot length, and we went out there and measured it tonight, right about here on, on the parking. So in terms of providing the parking, it's essentially, it's, it's a matter of an inch, a few inches on, on, on this one. And it's a cent, and again, it's not affected unit sixty-six at all.
Right.
And then on.
Because of the angle of the corner.
Because of, and, and that's, that's the issue because of the curve and the way the building was placed. And so the, it just, the corner just touched it. And on, on this one, it, it, the distance is, it would be twenty-five point three on one corner and twenty-five point one on the other.
And what about across the street? What are those? I don't even notice.
Those are all, this is the twenty-foot measurement, okay, across the street because there's no sidewalk. And so you have, on the first one, you would have twenty-one feet, right? On the second one, you would have twenty-one feet and twenty, uh, twenty-two feet. No, I'm sorry. You would have twenty-one feet here. This one, you would have, oh, this is to the, this is to the portico. It's thirty-one. To the, to the foundation is thirty-four. So you would have twenty, twenty-two feet. Twelve from thirty-four is twenty-two point eight. Okay, to the garage. And, and the same here. So these all comply. These are all in conformance with the, with the, setting aside the, the issue that.
Which, which ones all comply?
Setting aside the issue that Mike will bring up about the porticos on the, on the one carpet garage. Okay?
Many?
What?
So, uh, that, so, so the issue.
And I understand why we're here.
The issues that, the issues are those two.
Let it be known, I do understand why we're here. I thought it might be advantageous, time for me to bring up a couple of things that I was concerned with. And it's just, you know, look tight.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I, you know, we're here, and, and we're here, most importantly, because, and they're here this evening because the, the buyers of, of these two units have been waiting patiently for the, for the month.
Why are they still alive?
For the month to pass, and are very anxious to get in. This, this unit here is an affordable unit.
Mm-hmm.
And so the affordable buyer, of course, is anxious to get in. The HCD is anxious to have it.
To have everything moved along.
Close, have it moved. So that's why we're here.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak on this? Please?
Who made this one? Who made this one? Uh, same, the same, I would, I would guess.
This one had a different dimension than this one. This one's in your favor, one of the stamped on it, by the way.
Well, again, this one, this one was measured with the pavement, from the edge of pavement. This one, we did the measurements from the center line.
Oh, okay. Right, so that's why that's.
That's actually not accurate because this was produced after we requested it measured from the center line baseline.
No, I don't think so.
Yes, okay. We're within, I feel like you move on to my next question. What I did is I took twelve feet off all these dimensions that you had, assuming it was coming from the center line.
Right.
This one's nineteen feet, this is nineteen one, this is twenty-five.
From the portico, right.
No, from the portico, you're twenty-two, three.
This, this is from, this is a measurement from the portico.
All right, is that, is that a cover or is that a stoop? That's just.
That's, that's the, that's the cover of the.
It's got a roof.
Yeah.
So that's part of the structure.
Yeah. Well, that, that's a question, but, but it is the portico, yes. The, the distance to the foundation is a thirty-four foot, maybe, Mike?
Well, yep. In our zoning book, it, it says, it has a description about it, as far as that porch goes. It provides shelter, a platform, and there's a few other things on that. And I actually asked the building inspector, because I believe it's part of the structure, so I asked him his opinion, and he was in agreement that it's part of the structure. So that's why I keep referring to that.
Okay. I was looking at the definition of building in the zoning book.
Structure.
Not structure. Because when you look at set, when you look at front yard requirements, which is the so-called front yard setback, it talks about building, it doesn't talk about structure.
All right. Can I say something else?
Yeah, court ahead. We have the floor.
Again, it, it's not relevant to.
I, I don't want to beat this up. At, at the end of the day, I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference, to be honest with you. We're here because, you know, we have to determine whether it's an insubstantial change or a substantial change, correct? Back in two thousand and eighteen, get the minutes from that, you increased the building depth by five feet. Add it to the back, it's right here.
Add it to the back, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That's what you're off, is five feet. That change that you made, you take, you take five feet, add five feet to these dimensions, and you're in compliance. It's this change that created this problem.
I, I don't.
You don't think so?
So you're saying the front didn't follow the back?
I don't follow that, really.
All right. Your original design that, and you go back to two thousand and nine, that was approved, right?
Yeah.
Was a certain sized building.
When, when the.
And then in April of two thousand and eighteen, you added five feet to the back of the building.
To the back, right.
All right. Well, the back can't go any further back because you're in a retention pond. Because if you could move it back, you would've. That five feet that's added to the length of the building affected the front setback line. So, well, the only reason I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult is, is I'm asked, I'm being asked a question whether or not it's a, a insubstantial change or a substantial, and that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around. But I'm looking at the results of a previous decision is affecting this problem. So at, at what point does it, do the insubstantial changes become a substantial change is what, I guess my question would be. Maybe town council or somebody else that could answer that question for me.
Well.
I'm happy to comment on that if you, if you want to just jump in just briefly because, you know, we continued this hearing once before and got an extension to tonight. So the reason I mention that fact is so I can mention this one, which is you have to act on the application in front of you. And while you can't ignore, you know, obviously the history of what brought the project in, that's now approved and that's the approved project. So it's the delta between what's approved and what you have in front of you by way of a request that you have to consider for tonight. We can't unwind it and go back to the previous iterations and where it started and then consider the whole thing and declare every incremental change now is cumulatively substantial. I don't think that's contemplated by the regulations. You've got one decision in front of you and that's whether the March second proposed change is, are in substantial or substantial.
And that's what I need the clarity on is at what point do I, do I even consider the, these past changes? Because it's clear that that affected this. There's no doubt, um, in my mind anyways. But I can't consider that is what you just told me. So I have to decide whether or not this encroachment into the setback is a substantial or insubstantial change, correct?
The other one was approved already.
Yeah, okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add on to that.
Go ahead.
I, Leon Corr, for the applicant, agreeing wholeheartedly with town council, I think that's exactly correct. If the board looks at where the, the, um, change is proposed, it's right at a curve where essentially the town engineer noticed that there was a, a one-foot discrepancy at the point where they were getting towards as-built. So you're only talking about essentially one foot. And it is definitely, in my opinion, insubstantial within the meaning of the forty D regulations. It's, this is something obviously that if the developer had caught the, the issue before the structure went into place, it would have been rectified. However, the, the structure is built and this is a de minimis thing and so it's been brought forward in good faith to this board to say, well, it's an insubstantial modification, it's a very minor thing, giving you a motion going along with this very specific plan to show exactly what it is that's happened out there so that the record, as council advised you last week, will be clear. And that's very important. It is very important and that, I assume, is why the town engineer brought it up. He's concerned that the record be, be clear as town council is concerned, as you are concerned, and as the developer is concerned. And so I think what you have before you this evening is a, a clear situation where you have a plan and, and a request that match up and that it is insubstantial.
Yeah, the, the only thing I wanted to point out for the board again, um, it, it, on units sixty-five and sixty-six, it is the one foot that the lawyer is talking about. When we look at sixty-seven and sixty-eight, those do have porches on the front, which extend out, I'm assuming about four or five feet or, or feet further into the setback. So, um, you know, I'm just looking for clarity so that I can do my job efficiently. And I want to be clear that it's not just the foundation we're talking about. We're also looking at these porch structures. The other thing I wanted to point out, and in my letter it's referenced, um, while phase one has issued COs and in, in the applicant's letter, one of the two letters they submitted as part of this request, they pointed to phase one as being, you know, no issues in phase one. I want to point out that, you know, the as-built plans, the building permit drawings did not show, show these porch structures in any way, shape, or form. It was only with Mark's, you know, astute observation that we noticed that these things were in addition to what was approved by this board. So, um, I do want to point out that while this, this discussion is limited to phase two, it appears that we have a few structures in phase one that do extend within the same setback.
Wait a minute. Going back to our discussion with, with Tim last time, as far as the porch. One observation that's aggregating the situation with, with the coming forward with the porch, whether it's part of the structure or not, is that added parking spot that's in the front of that thing is pushing the cars out into the sidewalk like I showed you that picture, uh, last time I was in. That I believe is an issue as well.
Well, I thought about that issue after, after the last meeting. And, um, again, for, for purposes of this building here, because this is the one that is in question. I would propose that, that, because the, the sidewalk is, there's three feet from the, uh, road to the sidewalk and then the sidewalk is, is five feet.
Yeah.
And then, and the sidewalk essentially goes across the driveway.
Correct.
So I, I would propose that for this, this structure, we, we taper the, the sidewalk, uh, over to the roadway, to run parallel to the roadway in front of, of this structure. Okay, which would give you additional parking without infringing, which would give you additional space without infringing upon the, uh, the sidewalk if, if you were parking in that area.
If you're asking me, uh, what my thoughts would be.
Yeah.
My thoughts would be to eliminate that parking spot, go back to what you approved on, which is one inside and one outside. And that, and I think that if it was done that way, they'd give you the space that you needed. I understand that you're trying to add more parking to it, but I, I think that it's creating a problem for the pedestrian right away in, in that sidewalk like I showed you in the picture.
Well, it, it's.
And if you need to, I can show you the picture that I showed him if, if that helps you at all.
Yeah, I, I, it, that's, that's valid. However, I think as a practical matter, what's going to happen then is, is that you would, um, have, if, if there were two cars at the, at the unit, one would be in the garage, one would be in the driveway. If the one in the garage wanted to get out, the, the one in the driveway would have to move. So you're probably then going to just park on the street. And it would be better to have the.
So, so how is that different from when you first, wait, how is that different from when you first applied for this permit to get it approved and you agreed to that? I just, I'm not following the logic with that.
Well, I think one, one of the reasons why we, why the, the two-car garage was proposed was the change.
If you, if you're twenty-two feet, you have three feet separation, you have five foot for the driveway, right? Eight feet, twenty-two feet, take eight off of that, you're down to fourteen feet from the porch to the sidewalk.
Right, so, so again, right.
It's not even, Tim mentioned in the last meeting, and I didn't look it up to confirm it. He said our minimum parking space was eight by sixteen. And now that's eight by fourteen, so it doesn't need a, a parking space unless you have a motor for you.
Right, and, and unless you, you relocated the, the sidewalk in front of this one building so that it was two feet closer to the road mark, which you have the ability to do. You can either make it a, make it a four foot.
What was the preference of that three-foot strip that, that for the snowbank in the winter time for when you plow the snow? Because the road is going twenty-four feet wide, so I don't think you're going in with a payload or removing the snow. So the snow's got to pile up.
Well.
I, I would think that that was created that way to try to give you space for your snow collection as well as maintain that sidewalk because there's going to be school kids. That's what the sky is.
But it's the driveway. You're removing the snow from the driveway. It's in front of the driveway.
From the street.
Yeah, but, but you, you, when you remove the snow from the street, you also, we're also removing the snow from the driveways. There's not going to be, and, and that's what I'm, but that's where the side, that's where I'm proposing the sidewalk relocation. Because in, in essence, it's, it's, it's a driveway. When, when you get to the sidewalk here, you're walking on the driveway to the, until the sidewalk is over here.
If I could just ask a question, are we not, of, of you, Mike, are we not going to run into that same issue with more house, more units further down the road?
What, going forward?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I, I would think that the, and, and from what I understand, this was, uh, I think you, you had mentioned it. This was just an oversight and it just happened. So I would think that because this happened, that you would do your due diligence to make sure the foundation was in the right spot.
Yeah, it, 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 again, you're right, never, it didn't, it didn't come up.
Yeah, going forward. I'm talking about tomorrow, not today.
It didn't, yeah, it didn't come up before. What we attempted to do in, in citing these buildings was to cite them as, as, as close as possible to the, to the locations of the prior buildings. And, uh, and again, the portico was added because the foundation comes up to here, the front door is there and you have to get out of the building somehow, so rather, and so it was a convenience to provide a, a covered entry. That, that's what the purpose was.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, Mark Allen with Allen Engineering, engineer for the project. With that exact question, uh, moving forward, uh, we intend to work with the developer a lot more closely in, in citing every individual building with all porches, porticos, decks, landings, and, and cite them appropriately moving forward. That, that's the intention after this meeting tonight.
And those would be beyond the setback line, including the portico?
Correct.
And if we agree that, could we require a foundation as-built and then Mike has the plans and if they have a portico on it that's five feet wide, we can determine if everything is more than twenty feet back? With the foundations in, not with the buildings up, right?
Neil has been giving me foundation as-built, so that's where this came up.
The foundations don't, the foundations don't include the porticoes, the porches, the overhangs, the decks. So I think at the building permit stage, when Bill sees the building permit, and then you see the building permit, you say, okay, this unit is, has, has the, the four-foot bump out of the portico, let's make sure it's set four feet back from, from, from the line. So I think, I think that catch is going to be made moving forward.
Yeah, but that, that catch isn't made at the permit application. That catch is made on the as-built.
Right.
Well, yeah, that's what we're saying.
So if that's foundation as-built, it has to be four and a half feet inside that line because I know it's.
Correct.
Right, right. So are they, are they currently giving you a foundation as-built prior to any lumber, any building being built? Or is it?
They give it to me before the argument. So it's, they can give it to me before the frame if they would like.
But we could require it if we, if we voted.
I, I think it would be a good practice.
We could require that the foundation is built prior to a.
If you're doing the as-built, whether you give it to them now or give it to them in three months, what difference does it make? Give it to them now if you have it done. If you're staking it off, you already know where to go.
No, no, if I may, Mr. Chairman, yeah, let's clear that up and no offense to your building inspector. You might not be the one doing this in a year, two years, whenever this happens, so let's, let's have that amount of rep. I said no offense, man.
Town council's getting rid of me.
I said no offense. All right, Mark? I meant neither of us may be here.
The problem would come to light before there's a.
Right.
Right.
There's a lot of aggravation, that's all.
Sure.
The only thing I would request is that we do get a layout plan that shows the setbacks and building locations well in advance. You know, kind of like a master plan.
Yeah.
Similar to what we had approved previously, um, showing these new structures.
If I could just interject, because they don't know which units are going to sell in which location, that's kind of difficult to do. So I think with each building permit application, we can show you, okay.
We have phase two designated for the style of building.
Right, but there's two styles, one with portico, one without portico.
Yeah.
So until they sell that duplex, they don't know which one is in that slot, so.
In my letter, right, this is based on what they've given us. They've designated villager one, villager two, and villager three.
And that's not how they've been built through phase one and then phase two?
I think it's in their marketing. It's depending on, on what their potential buyer may want.
Correct. So I think if it's building permit application, you'll see whether or not it's villager one or villager.
My concern is setbacks between buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
On the back end.
Right, so as, as they sell the units, we will know to jog as they go. So a master plan is only as good as it is today. I agree.
I, just to clarify the issue about the styles, um, because the, the prior, um, I don't know if the board got the, uh, the building, uh, the, the unit sale list that I've been providing. But the, the ones that I provide, and I think this is where the confusion came into, um, I would indicate, when we pulled the building permit, uh, we indicated whether it was villager two or villager, uh, or villager one. And in the other, in the blanks, in what is now blank spaces, we just, we had villager just as a placeholder because we hadn't designated. We're only building two types of buildings, uh, the villager one and, and the villager two. And again, it's, it's what the, the customer asks for. So it's difficult to determine, you know, for the whole phase upfront. But by building, certainly we can because we would know at that point.
Can I say something, one more thing about the as-bills? So if there's any buildings next to it showing that setback, that show, show the distance between the corners of the buildings to.
Yeah, and I think that.
We can see them as we.
The closest point to the setback.
Yeah, and I think that's a good protocol as we've been progressing throughout the project is we can just keep updating our as-bills as we go, you know, phase two is phase two and just keep adding the buildings as they go.
I believe Bill's been asking for the porches too.
Yep.
To have them on there.
Yep.
Because I know in one part of that plan, you're going to get with a, Bill, what, what part is it where the porches are all going to be really, really close?
Well, it's on the roundings.
Yeah.
I think that's what you're arguing about.
Yeah. Ten foot is the fire separation.
Right.
It can't be, the porch can't be within ten feet of each other or you're going to have to make a non-combustible area though.
Yep, yep.
Make a bridge.
Good neighbors.
That's in the junction of phase two and, and phase four.
Yeah, yeah.
Might have, we agreed that this was a more of a minor modification. It, we're only talking about these specific units.
That's correct. So this.
So if there was another issue.
You're referencing the, the proposed motion, um, so just, so you know, I've read this, um, and I'm fine with the form of it. So it references specifically the March two, two thousand and twenty letter and this plan. So that's what the proposed motion asks you to approve, just that, nothing else. That's what's referenced in the motion. And it was a suggestion of including that additional condition. So you could tap that on.
Foundation as-built.
Correct.
You know, for the purpose of cleaning things up, I think at some point we should deal with those units in phase one just for cleaning it up.
Clarity.
They will clean, you know, right now if they're not in compliance, we don't, we don't want to have that. Hopefully.
Don't get it cracked in.
But not tonight, I think.
So what about the, uh, my issue with the parking in front of that porch being only fourteen feet? Is that something we're addressing tonight or, or we're not addressing?
How do you want to handle it? That specifically isn't part of, uh, what they've submitted.
Well, that's what I'm asking. So is it something we address tonight or not? I guess Bill needs to know that because he's got to write his little Jan, John Hancock on the occupancy.
There's probably a grass strip between the room and the sidewalk?
Yeah.
There, there is a grass strip between the sidewalk and, and the road.
How long is the grass strip?
Opposite to it.
We could taper that down on that, that specific unit to.
And again, by tapering it down, you're only tapering it down in front of the building, which is all driveway anyways except for this little strip between them.
Right, but I don't know if aesthetically it's going to look good. This one weaves in, this one weaves out. I mean, should we move them all out?
Well, you're not going to notice.
And we made the grass strip?
You're not going to notice it because, because it's all, you know, there really isn't a sidewalk here because it's driveway. You know, so the sidewalk goes here and then you have the driveway. And then, you know, yeah, you put pavement in this little strip here.
Yeah.
But it, it would be actually better to have the, the pavement go to the, to the roadway because then you don't have this three-foot strip that we can't keep grass growing on anyways. So it, it, it actually makes sense, I think, to have the, the driveway adjacent, adjacent to the road in front of, in front of the building.
I think that.
That grass is going to grow when the rain gardens work.
The problem with that on the road, fourteen feet.
Are they?
Have you noticed?
I haven't. I haven't checked it out.
I think what the chairman was asking at was that if, if it possible to maybe look at the sidewalk being adjacent to the right-of-way as opposed to three feet setback from the right-of-way, for the entire rest of the, for the remainder of the project.
Otherwise, depending on what unit you sell, it's going to be in and out.
That would be fine.
We plan on moving the units back.
I'm confused. There's one unit right now that has the portico on it, okay? But moving forward, all the rest of them, the porticoes aren't going to be on the setback. They're going to be alongside. So it's only this one building, which isn't addressed in their motion, by the way. So that has to be addressed too, the one building.
Mr. Chairman, the portico is addressed because it's addressed on the plan. The motion references the plan and shows the portico.
So the foundation, the structure, the porticoes, whatever, are all going to be the 20 feet or more?
Moving forward.
Moving forward.
Right, so with that being said, there's no reason to move the sidewalk. The only issue is there's one unit with those two parking spots that are only 14 feet. It just tells me that that three-foot burn, that three-foot strip was put there to allow for, you've got to have a place to put the snow. We've got a heavy snow yet. You're going to have snow.
But again, it's the driveway. We're only proposing it for the sidewalk as it passes the driveway.
Oh, then you wouldn't put snow there anyways.
You're removing the snow, because we removed the snow from the driveway when we plowed the road, so there's not going to be any. It's not an issue, I don't think, Mike. I really don't.
Anybody in the room that would like to, has a comment on this, other than people that have heard?
Bring that back further to comply with ADA requirements? If somebody's in the way, somebody died, you just run into the car, you've got to go around it. I'm just, there's multiple issues that happen in my mind as far as what's going on with this, and I think the issue from town goes to parking spots on that unit. I know you're holding on to them, but the house is just too close.
Are they occupied currently?
Which, which are?
The ones that Mike's talking about with the-
No, 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 these, no, this is under construction.
Oh, but they have been-
Do you have any other comments?
I think it's in Phase One, on the corner. This is Phase One over here. There are, over in here, there's a house with a porch, that I showed you, that blue car.
No, I think you're probably up here.
Oh, yeah, I'm around.
Here, if you're close right here.
Your photo?
Yeah, no.
Those are around here, yeah.
Right around one of these two units here?
Either be this one or this one.
It was on the inside.
Okay, be this one.
So how far from the, how far back is that?
That's 26.
Minus eight, right. That's over here. That's one of those. So now, is 26 to the foundation or to the porch?
To the foundation, probably.
So that's, so this is, this is what's being created, because that would be 22 feet. This is- This is 20, so it's pretty close to what this is. So that, there's a small car, and that's what's going on. So what he's saying is take the sidewalk and just loop it around the backside of this car.
Can I say that one?
Again, that car is not parked all the way, because it is before that, that bush is not in front of that car.
Oh, you know, I know we had said that, but this is the habit of how people drive, so.
They park all the way.
And just to comment on that, what we're considering here is construction, not new behavior, so how we designed it is what we need to focus on.
Where's the board's project?
Well, since it's only referring to the one, I think I'm going to say that it's insubstantial for the one building, but I do think that there are some other issues out there.
Yeah, and I agree with that. It's insubstantial, and with the condition about the as-bills for the future foundations, I don't know how we get around this parking spot. Need to be, in these parking issues, I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but you need to know that, so we can sign it, so then these people can be satisfied. I think we're all in agreement that the buildings are coming down, not even going to stay there. Firstly, I have a problem with only having 14 feet for a parking spot. Even if you're uptight to the porch, it's still 14 feet. So unless you have a smart car, you're not fitting. And again, that's with that 10.1-foot car that you pointed out, with the smart car without the wind-up key.
I think, again, I think the solution is moving the sidewalks.
I think the solution is taking the parking spot out, so I guess we're in an impasse. I don't know, I don't, sidewalk coming down, they're going around the car. You went through that big conversation at the last meeting. You were saying how you were approved for the number of parking spots. You went through the whole thing, one inside the garage and one outside the garage. And then you added the two-car garages, which increased the spots, and then you added this other spot on this one, because it only had the one parking spot.
If there's only one unit, it'd be a big deal to just remove that second space, would it? Or that partial second space?
Well, it would make it different than all the other units, so.
And the porch would make it different than the other units, so.
You just say you can increase the price then, sorry, this is the original.
Yeah, one less space, and you will get more money, right.
Tyler, Bill, do- We are marketing in with the two spaces and that one, so it would make it different, and it would make it hard to sell at that point. So I would suggest that we could dogleg the sidewalk in front of that one particular unit to meet the 16 feet. So we would only be moving the sidewalk over two feet as you just approached that unit. And I'd be happy to sit down with Bill and Mark and have Mark draw a plan that Bill would approve, that the sidewalk could be moved, and we could dogleg around it. Sidewalks curve all over town, not all in a straight, continuous path. So I would appreciate if we could leave the paving, but I understand. Thank you.
And this issue wouldn't come up again, because everything would be back 20 feet, the porticoes, the garages, whatever. Would that work? Mike, you?
I don't know. How does anybody else feel about it? Am I the only one that's concerned about a parking spot?
No, it's not a parking spot. It's not big enough to be a parking spot.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
It's an open paved area that probably might be used for parking.
Well, who wants to regret from the car from Tim last, and maybe have a good argument.
Convenience up there.
And that's what currently sold?
Yes, I have a reservation on one of those units.
That has a short driveway?
Yes.
The sales one, are you?
Uh, yes.
Is that true?
At night, I put the other hat on.
He wears a wig.
That's not one for women.
So is there any potential liability to the town for approving an undersized driveway like that? That would direct foot traffic onto the street?
Yeah, I think we would make the driveway an acceptable size.
Well, I think I was just asking.
I'm sorry.
Because I need that answer.
It sounds like, if I may, Mr. Chairman, three choices, leave it the way it is, jog the sidewalk, or remove it. So those are the questions front of you. So you have a couple of options. Pull your membership and decide what you think is the best. You give the applicant a couple of minutes to talk amongst themselves, see if they want to accept or consider one of those as their preferred option, unless they've already made up their mind, or hear some feedback from the board. I mean, what does the board think is the best solution to be consistent with your intent in locating the depth of the driveway the way you did in the first place? But obviously didn't contemplate that paved area in front of the portico initially, but now you have it.
We didn't, we didn't know about the portico. The portico is a surprise.
So that's why we're here.
The entrance stairs were always there, so that space would have always been taken up, whether it had a roof on it or not. I pointed that out last time we talked about it. The issue was, is we move forward that five feet, basically.
Yeah, that was really excellent.
And that's what's crunching that driveway down.
And again, it'll be addressed going forward. It's just this one. And I think doglegging the sidewalk in front, because it's, again, it's essentially driveway now. So whether you're walking on the other side of the three-foot strip, or a two-foot strip, or a one-foot strip, or walking next to the road.
So in front of the driveway that's in front of the garage, there is no strip, because it's a driveway, right? There is no, right in front of the garage, going, goes out into the street, there is no strip, even on the other side of the sidewalk.
Right.
The sidewalk is not, you can't differentiate it.
Exactly.
In front of the building, there also is no strip. I mean, we've got the drive-
We have two driveways.
We've got the two driveways. We've got the drive in front of the, of the parking area in front of the portico.
Yeah.
There is also no strip.
Right, the only question, Pam, would be-
So moving anything, is that not a move point? There's nothing to move.
Well, you would, when we lay out the sidewalk, we would taper it, we would taper it in to the end of the driveway. That's the only change. And where you put, and where you put that paved area on this little strip between, and again, it would be easier for us if, in terms of maintaining, if the paved area was right adjacent to the strip.
You would have, you would have to step back that, that grass area five feet from the edge of that additional parking area to maintain with the, if you taper it down, then you're going to have a teardrop piece of grass on the end. So you would just, if the driveway came down like this, and you had your strip and grass, you would just cut that back, so then when the driveway, and the sidewalk was coming along, you'd go around it. You know what I mean? Otherwise, what you're saying is you're just going to taper this down over here, square it off, pull it back five feet from the edge of that pavement, and square it off. If you're going to make, if you're going to make the driveway-
I'm sure I understand.
Sidewalk's coming down five feet.
Yeah.
Now you're going to jog it?
Yeah.
You don't have to taper it down to a point, because how are you going to maintain it?
What would you have to maintain?
Just cut the grass. Just cut, just cut the thing out square, so the sidewalk comes over, and then it would jog over. Again, just cut it back five feet from the edge of that parking area, whatever.
Yeah.
You follow what I said, right?
So you'll just add that to the proposed motion?
I'm going to move that our board wrote under 760 CMR 56.05, parentheses 11, that the proposed modifications set forth in the applicant North Brown LLC's second 2020 modification request are insubstantial in nature within the meaning of 760 CMR 56.07, parentheses four, because there will be no increase in building height, no increase in number of units, no reduction in size of the site, and no change in the building type from garden apartment to townhouse or high-rise, or change in housing tenure, parentheses, ownership to rental, and to allow a revision to the approved plan for the comprehensive permit as shown on the amended comprehensive permit plan for North Village Sheet 101 dated March 29th, 2020, as prepared by Allen Engineering and Associates and signed on sale to allow the dimensions, structures shown thereon, specifically to allow the setbacks from the accessways to the buildings and structures as shown thereon, and to allow the porticoes or overhangs shown thereon.
I'm going to add that language to it.
And further to require-
You can say it in your own words, but can't use my handwriting. I'll help you out.
That the, that foundation permit submitted to the building department, paved porticoes-
Overhangs?
Oh, overhangs.
And porches, if any.
And porches, if any, and-
Provided.
Provided sidewalk to be-
Relocated.
Relocated, so that paved area in front of the portico on unit 67 is no less than 18 feet long.
Sixty.
Sixty, okay. Good, you did that, that's what I was asking for, 16 feet.
16 feet long, okay. We'll get that, written, printed.
Where'd you get the 16 feet from?
So the jog will result in that.
Nobody can buy a Cadillac Escalade that lives there.
You just said that, you just said that it was a compact parking spot.
Hey, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, give her a second.
And attorney winner.
Give her a second. Mr. Tassino, any further discussion?
That includes the as-bill, right, and then without talking?
Yeah.
Yes, that's condition one.
And that foundation as-built will be submitted prior to framing, right, prior to getting a building on it?
I don't think that's part of the motion, because that's not really what they're here, but maybe, okay, I assume you're saying, yeah. The foundation, I mean, the as-built, they can show the foundation, but he's not going to be able to show the porch on it, because it won't be framed.
Correct.
Right, but if you have the plans, this-
The level of comfort level of there'd be a four-foot portico in front of it.
Okay, so I'm not going to require a second as-bill then, after it's framed, to show-
I think through the roadway as-bills, as we keep-
If you have, if you have an as-bill of the foundation, and then you have a set of building plans that, in fact, gives you a dimension to that porch.
Well, the building permit needs to show the porch, which they have not.
Correct, right, correct.
We'll show a second as-bill of the porch.
A porch, portico, overhang, that needs to be indicated up front, so you know that the setback is-
And the building commissioner will be able to determine if they build a portico the size that's on the plan, that we're good.
Well, I get that, but still, the point of an as-bill is built.
Is to say what's planned for that building, right?
Tim offered to do two, one for the foundations and one for the occupancy.
Okay, we could also CC, we always prepare condominium documents before the ownership occurs, and those condominium docs go back, and we go back and get the decks, the porticoes, the overhangs. That condo doc gets recorded as registry D's prior to sale, so we could CC the town, the condo docs, if that helps, as part of that second as-bill.
I just care about that one favor. I don't need the document.
Need to do your job.
I just need something dimensioning the structure with the setback dimensions marked, so that it means what's been approved as part of the confirmation.
Okay, you have a motion. Give me a second.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Will you favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you. Just so we're clear, so- Since, since-
You've done this before, man.
Since the unit 65 and 67 don't involve the portico issue. We're clear that those-
We intend on signing that tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Just one house, keeping matter, while you're still here in Atlanta, while you're still here, I'd like to take their vote and just memorialize it. I'm going to draft something for them to sign after the fact that we can all- I'm gonna draft something for them to sign after the fact that we can all share and circulate. It'll say modification of comprehensive permit, insubstantial change, we'll staple it right on.
Yes.
Everybody will have the same document.
Perfect.
Understood? Everybody understand?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I mean, you worked for Coleman, I think, at the time, that I, that I, that I remember your name, because I was on the Board of Slockman, so I'm sure I dealt with you.
It was years ago, but.
I know, it was fond memory.
It's exactly.
It was, yeah, just sounds familiar.
Directly.
Atlanta, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
And it's not even a month in your back.
I know. Your lucky night. Okay, so we're gonna do that, we're gonna put my card on it.
I don't think these two, I think these two.
I took a picture and then we'll make a copy.
Look at my chart.
Of the letter. Just in case if it goes missing.
You wanna read it aloud?
I would love to read it aloud because I don't want you to read it because I'm the best speller in the world. My handwriting's good, I just can't spell.
Okay, you did a good job.
Do we have to formally open?
You guys read both?
No, no, it's on the plan.
You guys all set? Okay, we're gonna resume the, can this go in, very. Okay, who's yours?
Okay, so to make the turn, Andrew Survey and Engineering, on behalf of the applicant Ken Gow, and we formally request a front side and rear setback variance to the existing non-conforming structure that will stand as an accessory structure on the parcel in addition to the variance that has already been addressed in the application package. The structure will be decommissioned as a dwelling and the proposed structure will be the only dwelling on the parcel with one accessory building as shown on the plan.
Should we clarify decommission?
Yes. Structure will be decommissioned, well, it's a decommission as a dwelling.
All right, would you, all right, why don't you tell me what your definition would be?
Uh, they are disconnecting all plumbing from the house.
That's a big decommission.
Yeah.
Find some room with that to incorporate that.
That sounds comprehensive enough for my purposes, too. I think you, you nailed it.
I left some space at the bottom just in case.
It was written in the turn.
Who approved this whole thing just now?
No, you approved the entire stamped plan. That's not, that's a blow up of one portion of the entire plan.
So this is kind of clear.
All plumbing will be disconnected from the existing.
This one here, because this is less than what it was supposed to be.
No, we're talking.
Deemed as decommissioned.
Sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, that's it.
So these two. Nineteen, twenty. Building gonna be back into the same problem again. I just have, but I, we just approved this whole thing.
Here's the March two letter, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight.
Let me just take a picture of the.
That's what the letter says.
Let me just take a picture of the.
That's all that's included.
So.
I'm not saying we tied up every loose end that there is.
There you go.
All I'm doing is trying to. Next.
This is approved, we just make an agreement with you, part of the company's stationery, we'll keep this.
Yeah, I'll retype it and give you a pretty one with a, with a fingerprint.
Okay.
Very good.
One, two.
Yeah, one.
No, we're not, now that Corona.
I was gonna say, it'll take us fourteen days to find out about that.
Oh, wow. By then it won't matter. It won't matter time till these meetings stop, too.
Did everybody, yeah, Kristen read this? Does anybody wanna look at it, or does everybody hear what she said? Why don't you read it one more time, how's that?
Andrew Survey and Engineering, on behalf of the applicant Ken Gow, and we formally request a front side and rear setback variance to the existing non-conforming structure that will stand as an accessory structure on the parcel in addition to the variance that has been addressed in the application package. The structure will be decommissioned as a dwelling and the proposed structure will be the only dwelling on the parcel with one accessory building. As shown on the plan, all plumbing will be disconnected from the existing structure deeming it decommissioned as a dwelling.
So weren't the variances, did I?
Yeah, formally request a front side and rear setback variance to the existing non-conforming structure.
Do we need, do we need dimensions?
That's what I was waiting for.
It says as shown as the plan.
It's already referenced in the plan and record.
Um, there aren't dimensions, the, the structure is shown on the plan.
Yeah, without.
I have very rough dimensions to that structure that I used a scale, because I have a scaled structure in the back pocket. Apologize, my dog stepped on it.
Oh, you mean on the back? Yeah, on the front, you got it.
Dog stepped on it. Um, I have rough dimensions to the property lines and the, what's odd about this parcel is that there is no clear front and side.
Yeah.
There's no clear frontage.
Except that the definition of zoning law says the frontage is on the lot line upon which you access the property.
So I.
So in this case, it's, there's two frontages.
There's two frontages, so what it would be is the closest point to the edge of the laurel glades is nineteen feet. Closest point on the side is seven and a half feet, and then on the back of it to the stone wall, which is technically.
Along the line, yeah.
Uh, is thirty, is about thirty-three feet, and that's from the deck, not from the structure itself.
Uh, yeah, the structure.
Okay, then it's from thirty-three feet. So seven and a half, nineteen and thirty-three, that's distances.
Okay.
Um, the setbacks on this twenty-five-feet side, twenty-five-feet rear, fifty-foot front. So if you count the water as a rear setback and laurel glades as the front setback, we can put rough dimensions. I can also, actually, no, I can also give you a new certified plot plan that is stamped by an engineer with the dimensions.
Without the dog.
Without the dog.
Yeah.
Without the dog.
You can make that a condition of the decision, that it just be submitted.
With this, on letterhead, with this, with dimensions.
Right.
Yep.
Whereabouts are they, are you gonna put the septic, or is that?
So the septic is, the septic, no, that's not on this plan, that's on a septic plan. Uh, septic is going, well, proposed, is going, right? It's here. Ish. It's, it's about outside, it's outside the hundred-foot off, so there's a little bit on it, but.
What's the proposed future use of the new accessory for it?
Storage.
Bathing soaps.
You guys want this?
Bathing soaps, storage.
Yeah.
It shows a septic on it, you want it?
I just.
No, it's in, septic, septic's changed.
Oh, change.
We revised the septic, because it hasn't been submitted to the board yet.
All right.
Since that plan, it's been revised.
Are there any heat in it that are gonna remain in that structure?
Uh, electricity will remain to that structure. Um, so there's, is there heat?
There is heat, yeah.
There is heat, so heat will, I don't know.
It's not, it's not utilized as a dwelling after residence, nobody lives there.
Yeah, it's, it's a post.
You go up and watch the Patriots on Sunday.
It's somewhere to get out of the rain when it, if you're at the lake and it's raining.
So the plumbing and heating will be removed from that.
Well, the.
No, that's not what he said.
Up to you.
The plumbing will be removed, wa- water and sewer will be.
I'm gonna use that.
Is it electric heat?
Propane.
Propane?
If you notice, you might notice then when you go by, it, it, it's, there's a, there's another building there that we still use like as a quarter-court power room, but it's not really.
By the rez.
I mean, it's full of lawn chairs, outboard motors.
Sure.
They're gonna have no place to put any of that stuff. I mean, they've got, you know, a small child with things, with toys.
Storing a kid in there, too?
Yeah.
Well, you, no plumbing, you won't have a toilet.
I'd put my own in there.
Nope, there will be no plumbing, the, the.
There's so much stuff, light jacket.
The septic will be disconnected and the water will be disconnected.
And they're not gonna have any room in the house to, you know, to be able to, to do anything either, there's no garage, so. Being up there, you just accumulate a lot of stuff. You need a lot of stuff for the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Water, toys.
Sluggies.
If you, if you went there right now and walked in the storage building, you'd have a hard time opening the door.
You couldn't walk in.
Absolutely, you'd have a hard time getting in the door.
Yeah.
Kayaks take up, take up a lot of space.
So you have a proposed document here, as well as the original application.
So would there, would there be a condition added to that to restrict the use of that? So it doesn't become.
Stretch.
Doesn't become a.
Apartment.
A sleeping, it could be a bar. It could be a bar.
It's an accessory structure.
I don't have a problem with that. Accessory structure can mean a lot of things, so.
Yeah, be outside. Go to the main house.
I just wanna make sure that it doesn't become, it could become another sleep, sleeping area, so.
Only, only illegally.
Only illegally, but.
So if they make that into a secondary.
If it's not mentioned that, that part of this, then it's, it's a little more difficult for the building official to enforce.
You can make it explicit. Well, it's better always to make it explicit, but the moment that becomes a dwelling unit, now you have two principal uses on one lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which we stated in here, it'll be the only dwelling.
Exactly, so if they do that, it becomes.
Non-conforming.
Non-conformable. It becomes non-compliant, it becomes illegal, which also means a very fundamental basis.
The strange thing that happened, I was with foot bridges that connect.
But that undermines the validity of the house, and they don't wanna lose the house.
Right.
Because that would give the building commissioner the authority to pull the occupancy on the house they live in.
Yeah.
So I.
No, I didn't make a joke, that's a good point. I, I don't suspect that it's gonna happen, but I think it should be part of the decision.
Based on where it is, I agree.
I agree completely, too. Make it explicit.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Make a motion to approve, uh, the application of two zero one nine dash one four, twenty-nine laurel glades. One condition I'd like to see is the, uh, restricting the use of the existing building that's gonna become the future accessory building.
You could do that, Nia, if you drafted a decision, right?
Yep, absolutely, but I'd like the, it to be part of the board's vote.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other condition being that a plot plan will be submitted after the fact.
Not winter letter, right?
Along with a letter. And then I can bear a draft decision for the board.
Do you, you're not gonna read this?
What am I gonna read?
Let me try to chip in.
You write like Brian.
I didn't write that. That's, what are you talking about?
What?
Up here, the, the whole, the whole, the whole, what he was requesting, right? Is that what, we, we should read that, I would think.
All right, uh.
Because we're allowing that.
For Kenneth Guin, requesting a variance in Aurora Agricultural Area Zone District pursuant mass general laws, chapter forty-eight, section ten, Douglas zoning bylaws, section nine point two, and section four point one, point three, table of dimensional requirements for side yard setbacks of twenty-five feet to for the pre-existing non-conforming parcel, the required minimum setbacks is possible. Very narrow billable area relief is being sought is to reduce the side yard setback from twenty-five feet to eighteen point five to construct a new two-story dwelling located at twenty-nine Laurel Glades, map one forty-eight, parcel thirty-eight. And everything that she said in her letter.
There you go. Second.
Hey, a motion by, Mr. Fitzpatrick, second by Mr. Tassino.
And then we were gonna add the, with the condition.
That was already added before you made me read that.
All right. I'm sorry I made you read that.
No, 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 that's all right.
Okay.
You just tried to trick me.
So we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, second by Mr. Tassino. All with favor?
Aye.
Aye. And your request is approved.
Thank you.
See you next month.
I will come back this month just to say hi.
If you could get this in some time. Because Brian was probably used that in his, so he was gonna wait the decision.
I can probably get it over tomorrow and on the next day and stand a subject tomorrow.
We'll get it done in the next three days.
Hopefully next week.
Let's afford it.
Okay, so I don't have to worry about something. Do, do you wanna cop check leader?
Yeah, well, we're gonna leave, because you took a picture of it, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so you're okay, so we're gonna leave this until we get the typed one.
Okay, perfect.
Fair enough.
Yep, you keep that. Thank you so much.
How's it going?
Good. Good. Keep him in the lead.
That's how you gotta do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all, very much.
Good night.
Night now. So I think the, uh.
Good night.
Next order of business, we're gonna, just discuss the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, but I understand that was withdrawn, so it's not gonna go on a town meeting?
It's not currently going to town meeting, I know the planning board is still currently discussing it, but, you know, there were issues raised through town council about the ramifications of what was proposed, so the board wanted to take a step back and digest that.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll be updated on that as it, because that looks forward.
Hopefully we won't be updated.
We wait for that comes back before we address it.
I guess, because we don't know what, what the, the new proposal's gonna be.
Per authority, that's all.
And then we had another, um.
If you want, I can mention to the planning board that the zoning board would like to have some input in anything that's around it.
We certainly would, that would be great.
Did you guys read what they proposed?
Well, I think it's very impacting, I don't know whether we can, why we can't, shouldn't talk about it. Should we not say something about it?
Can we talk about that, Mr. Counsel? Yeah?
You can talk about it, it's on your agenda.
Yeah, okay. Well, I watched their meeting, and the reason for this proposed zoning change said was to reduce our load on, our caseload on zoning. I went back ten years, and I made a list of all the cases that we had, and averaging one per month. I don't think that's excessive for a load for us. I for one didn't put in a request to try to reduce our load, I don't know if anybody else has.
I do, huh?
Um, we have two members that are missing, but if you go back to two thousand and ten, we had fourteen, two thousand and eleven, we had ten.
Right.
Twelve, we had six, thirteen, we had four, fourteen, we had twelve, fifteen, we had eleven, sixteen, we had thirteen, seventeen, we had twelve, eighteen, we had eight, and nineteen, we had thirteen. And so far this year, I don't believe we had any. I don't think we're overwhelmed.
I don't feel, most meetings are relatively short.
If that's the reason for the, for the zoning change, I don't know where it's coming from.
Uh, since you went that far, um, it was brought before the zoning board by a zoning board member or someone else?
No. Well, if you, no, it was, it was on the planning board that I had.
I'm sorry, planning, I, I misspelled.
Planning board by a planning board member.
Okay.
That stated that the, the purpose of it was because of, to reduce the, the caseloads that we have. And I don't think that we're overwhelmed, I don't know.
I'd agree with that.
I think one per month is an excessive, and I think last year we had, uh, two hundred and seventy-three permits, building permits pulled and locked, and correct me if I'm wrong, and that was for houses, garage inhibitions, swimming pools, uh, combined. And we had thirteen applicants, seven B and variances, and six B and, uh, special permits, vice versa. Well, if that's a justification, I don't think the, I don't think it's.
To my knowledge, nobody on this board is complaining about caseload, yeah.
And I don't, I don't think it's a burden to the, to the town or the taxpayers that, that little amount of people coming in. I, I went through the list, I have them pretty far back, and you get back into the early two thousands, yeah, there was some years that were probably thirty-something cases. And if it was continuous like that through everything, I would, I would agree, absolutely. But while we're fluctuating back and forth from eight, eight to twelve, thirteen, four, six, you know, it's not very, not, not very much at all.
What are they trying to do with?
Excuse me?
What are they trying to do?
What are they trying to do with the zoning?
Yeah.
They're trying to, uh, I think I have it somewhere, and you might even have it in a packet. Yeah, I think we, we have it, he has it as well. In a packet, like I mentioned, yeah. Somewhere in all this stuff.
I, I've lost everything. I had everything organized, and it's gone, gone, gone.
Well, what are they trying to do? Well, what are they trying to do? They're trying to, uh, take the lots of parcels that have, uh, area or frontage of lesser amount than was required in the table of dimensions, may be used at any time in the future provided it's recorded as a plan to describe. Right? That's one thing that they want, I know they will. Uh, they wanted to, um, take the non-conforming single, uh, single and two-family resident structures, take the determination away from the, a building official, and we restart it without limitation, um.
Is that the thing Lester's trying to introduce?
Yes.
Oh, is that from this?
Yeah.
I believe it's, I think, trying to introduce.
That would make my lot okay, right?
I have no idea. I don't know what your lot requires.
Of course you do.
I do?
Yeah.
Okay.
So anyways, the biggest thing.
If I, if I knew what it required, I'd probably have a lot.
No, I need a foot and a half, but I guess, but I don't know, I don't, I don't really care, because, you know, everybody, everybody worries about that and just hearing that there.
I don't know what it is. I don't either. So we're in agreement.
All that's gonna come out in the wash. Now, we're talking now with the insurance company, and I'm, I'm looking for some money.
You still talking about the zoning bylaw proposal?
Yeah, we're, we're talking about the zoning bylaw, you're talking about something else, so I, I have no interest in, in engaging into that conversation with you, because it's nothing to do with me.
Yeah. Well, it's the same thing.
Okay, but do you read the same thing?
I have no idea what you're talking about. Sorry. So anyways, um, getting back to what we're talking about, the zoning proposed change, I think that our caseload doesn't warrant that change, um, everybody else is entitled to their opinion, obviously.
I don't understand it.
Okay, can we read up on it?
You know, I, I don't have to read up.
Okay.
When I win, I win.
I guess, so we can.
Now, as he knows, and he's been informed, he cannot represent the town on that, because the town took a thing not to pay no more bills, so now the town scrambled, and then I say, hey, you've got a board, you've got this, you've got that, you've got people, they gotta pay the bills. Now they're trying to go back and say, well, we're gonna reopen everything.
If we're past the zoning stuff and we're.
I have no idea what we're talking about, but it's not anything that's on our agenda.
No, I don't think it's on our agenda. Right, I don't think it's on our agenda.
Yeah.
You're driving crazy.
So, um, but we could, we could put this on our agenda for next month and discuss.
I, I think we wait until they, they come up with whatever they're gonna do and talk about it. I, I think we pretty much hashed it out. Um, as far as the minutes, I like the table, and the next meeting, I've had just about enough of this. Make a motion.
We do have one other, uh, thing, but, um, a few months back, um, I actually discussed with the board about the, uh, fact that, um, uh, consultant fees were being paid from the fifty-three account, and, and, and the board actually voted at the time to,
Oh, yeah, yeah.
applicant would have a right to review the bill prior to being paid, but, um, we talked to Bill, he has issued that, so, you know, we could talk about it tonight.
So historically, and as you may be aware, um, the town has utilized what's called the Mass General Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three G account, where we utilize outside consultants for a variety of things, everything from soil testing, construction inspection, and a number of other things. As it pertains to the zoning board, really it's limited to the current project that we have, which is, uh, North Village.
North Village.
Okay. Um, we do have outside consultants, which include testing companies and inspectors that go up there and, you know, do their routine business. And the way it generally works is we'll get a request from the applicant, and, and this also applies for the planning board, but more pertinent for zoning for you. Um, we'll get a request from the applicant for either an inspection or testing. Um, so they'll call me, let me know that per the decision generally. I'll coordinate the testing company which we have contracts with, or the consultant which we have contracts with. And when we solicit proposals, we do share that with the applicant, so that if they have any objection, there's a whole process that can be followed, that they can challenge that, go to the board of selectmen, and basically override the selection choice that the board makes. If, um, so as, as a project would progress, we'd get a request for an inspection or testing. Um, I'll coordinate it, the consultant will go out, do the inspection or the testing, and then they'll submit their invoice for the work. Um, I'll review it to make sure it's what we requested. We'll authorize payment, and the payment is established, as I mentioned, through a fifty-three G account. That's money that's paid as part of an application process, goes into a separate interest-bearing account that's maintained by the town accountant. Essentially, the town manages those funds, we pay the outside consultants utilizing those funds. If the funds get to a balance where it falls to a certain level, we have the account replenished by the applicant. So basically, it's a fluctuating thing, you know, and we've done that numerous times with North Village, for example. We'll get the invoice, review it, approve it for payment. At that point, we'll send a copy to the applicant so that they have an opportunity to review it. Now that's after I review it and approve it. If there's an issue, they can certainly raise the issue. But my main concern is getting the town's consultant paid promptly. The process, you know, goes through a process where it's reviewed, requested, reviewed, and approved. Um, if there's an issue on a dispute, that could be handled after the fact. Um, I don't want to delay towns consultants getting paid is my concern. And, and, and I don't wanna get into a situation where we might have a particular, uh, developer that might challenge every in, invoice, and then, you know, it becomes a, a chronic issue. Um, so, that, that's generally my concern.
That could eat up an awful lot of time, I would think, if that happened. I mean, I can understand that that might happen, actually.
It could, it could.
We do have a, a town that is, uh, they got themselves in trouble, you, you heard of that, right?
No, we don't.
Well, we got a town that got themselves in trouble. Apparently, there's some, some bills got paid that weren't supposed to be paid. So that's being.
In Douglas?
Not saying.
Some, some.
That's saying that it's being, you know, that's being.
Was it with a, was it with an engineer, is that what, like what we're talking about, Louis, or is it something totally different?
No, no, you can't talk, you know, like you guys can't talk, I can't.
Then we'll just pass on it then.
Then, then, then it wasn't.
We can't talk.
You'll be surprised, Dan, you'll be surprised.
So if I understand Bill correctly, this is basically a, uh, a deposited account to ensure the fact that the bill will get paid without taking money out of free cash.
Correct.
Um, after everything is approved, they do have the ability to see what the bill is, um, and if they dispute it, that can still be resolved after the fact, correct?
It can.
My concern is like.
So, that was a misunderstanding that I had at the beginning, because I'm thinking in a, in a different mode than, than how that would work, and that's why I would have made, I made the recommendation that if I was paying the bill, would get to see it, but I didn't understand how that process works. Now that I understand that, it makes perfect sense that it works in that manner.
Yeah, my only concern is, we all know, after you pay a bill, try to fight it. You know, after, you're not gonna wait till a check to refund you.
But Bill, so. So you're, you're gonna hire Louis and do some work on my job, you're the general contractor. In order to ensure that he's gonna get paid, you're gonna want money from me from a deposit.
I agree.
Okay, so I can bitch all I want about what he did afterwards, that's between the three of us, but you still need to make sure that he's gonna get paid, because you're contracted with him.
I agree.
So that's basically what Bill's explaining that the town's doing, they're contracting with a, with an outside source, and, and, and
Yeah. Okay.
We can't earmark money out of free cash or some other, some other area to pay that consultant, we have to have a guaranteed source that take that money out.
I completely understand that.
No, I know that, so I think in that scenario, that I think there is recourse for the applicant or whatever the, however you term the person, um, to dispute that, but they're requesting the inspection, and they're, and this is already a set fee that's agreed upon as far as what the hourly rate is for an engineer or a surveyor or whatever, whatever's coming out, correct?
Yes.
So.
But, but the hours are different than the.
Right. If there's a dispute anywhere.
Than what?
Yeah, so if that was my job, and I was paying you to hire Bill to come out, I'd make sure, me or somebody from my company who was out there to make sure that Bill was out here for frigging four hours.
Yeah, but they don't see the bill, that's my point, they don't see the bill till after it's paid.
No, he's saying that it'd be after it's approved, he's saying.
I, I can say personally, I had one day, I never saw, I never saw, two months later, I saw it.
We, we have, again, that was an anomaly, and I apologize for that, I apologize, Dan, when that happened. We do have a policy that when the voucher is signed by me for the work being done, you or whoever the applicant is should be getting a copy of the voucher.
And, and, and is that, is that happening, do you know, or?
Worthwhile. Generally speaking, yes, yes. Was that step created after his incident, or it was enforced before? No, no, no. It was enforced, well, I've been here twenty years, we've been doing it twenty years, so. Something just. Do you send that out, or somebody else send it out?
Maria.
Maria.
Yeah, and I, and I'm gonna just say that, for the very same reason, I was, I got totally confused about, about that vote.
Yep.
And, um, I did not realize the process that we were going through. When I realized the impact, I went, ah.
I honestly didn't think we were voting on something that important.
Right, right.
I missed it, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we rescind that vote. And, uh, period, yeah.